Father, we thank you for this new day and we thank you for this new week. We hope that the joys that you give us continue throughout this week. Please surround us with all your protection and with all your love. Fill us with joy and gratitude. May we all shine with your light through our actions and may we be a blessing to others. Please continue to bless us all and God please bless America. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor our Constitution, our Constitution's living, Texas, one state, under God, one liberty.
And now we'll have citizens' communications asked for it. And now we'll have citizens' communications asked for it.
Good morning, Yana. I want to begin my comments by thanking Commissioner Botagaff. After the last commissioner's meeting, he was hard enough to reach out to me since I asked a question about some of the committees that he's on, as well as my comments regarding issues out there around these states. So, thanks so much for listening to your podcast. I appreciate your reference. I also want to ask the court, as you began to move towards the process of looking at and preparing for the next year's budget, I hope that Commissioner's Court will, once again, as you did, I believe in eighteen, possibly nineteen, have workshops, committee meetings, so that citizens that are interested in participating in the process, either through comments or at least just listening to the commissioners and department heads here in County, that you would offer that opportunity to the citizens who are involved. It provides a lot of opportunity for community engagement as well as transparency for the court. And so, please consider that as part of the process for you this year. I also want to ask the court, and I brought this issue to court in the past, and I will continue to do so. The health tax that Uvalde County collects every year, two and a half million dollars, was reported in 2024. That is a significant amount of money. I believe that at least forty to forty-five percent of that goes to the Memorial Hospital. At the time that that was created, there was a need for the hospital to receive those funds in order to operate. That is no longer true. Uvalde Memorial Hospital is doing very, very well. And I believe that it's a fool's, the Commissioner's Court, to seriously consider how can you regalloping those dollars in Uvalde County into an area where there was need. I personally believe that that would be funding the fire departments, so that they can adequately provide the services that they provide to Uvalde County. They do an excellent job with limited resources. And when I lobbied against the emergency service district, it wasn't against the fire department itself or its members. Thank you so much for what you do. It is about the fact that this community does not need more tax burden. Thank you so much.
Okay. This is the only individual who signed up for citizens' communication. We'll move down to three and let's consider an act on purpose. Minutes we have before you, the minutes from January thirteenth, consideration. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Having motion to approve as presented by Commissioner Parkes. Is there a second? Commissioner Cogan, discussion. All in favor say aye. I oppose. Motion carries. We'll move down to four and let's consider an act on report and the 2025 proposed budget for the Texas Department of Agriculture. I have your conference.
I just have the questions. Good morning. Thank you all for having me in front of you. You do have the 2025 proposed budget. This year, we are continuing to be very conservative on our budget. Last year, we predicted a twenty percent decrease. This year, we predicted a twenty percent. And also cut some parts of our budget where we just felt we weren't, either using the funds in the past or we didn't see a need for them this year. So, you will see on page two, there is a yellow highlight at the bottom, and that's our total expenses. Last year compared to this year, like I said, there was some outlined items removed. So, that 2024 budget, if you hadn't added all those other numbers, but that is what our budget was for 2024. For expenses, I'm worried about a half million less than what we were last year. So, our majority of our expenses this year are going towards marketing. Uvalde County as a year-round overnight tourist destination and as well as local event marketing grants that we hand off to local events in the area to help bring those overnight tourists in. And then, in addition, we do have our twenty-five percent riverfront efforts that we will still spend for our taxes.
What is the traveling pattern?
We have partnered with Voices for Garden Authority, so they help us with the river cleanup, spreading message into all of the local schools in Uvalde County. So, they do a fifth and seventh grade classroom, and then they also added a high school classroom this year. Just help us spread the word about the rivers and the cleanup along with them. And that's only to be Uvalde County schools.
You're estimating more income this year?
We're estimating less income this year. Yes, yeah, we're expecting it to be less. So, we're just being more conservative with the numbers, hoping that more people come overnight. But with the trends, we are expecting it without bringing, expecting to help us.
Question to the panel. Back, ready.
She answered.
Is there a motion to accept the proposed budget?
I make a motion to leave set the proposed budget.
Commissioner Parkes, your second. Commissioner Diego, special. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, do you have a copy for the audit?
Yes, I'll be right back.
Down to five, we consider an act on review of the fire truck and parking improvement budget. Paul?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Can you recall that Uvalde County received a grant to the community development grant funds, State Agency, Texas Department of Agriculture, in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars? These made prioritized and the application to be used for the community of Temple, for a fire truck and also to try to do some parking improvements over there at Temple. The business about the fire truck, first, the county has been in this grant about twelve months, so it's a twenty-four month contract, reaching at a waypoint. The county is in compliance with the state agency. Everything has been done up to now. The ground cover reviews been approved by the state agencies. There are coordination and communication on that report. And so, we're ready to move forward. We've put the project out for bid and actually acquired a fire truck and also doing a parking improvements over there at Temple. So, the county has met with the Temple Volunteer Fire Department. We appreciate their interest, their support, and their coordination. They have assisted Uvalde County with spugging out the truck. It's going to be a rescue pumper truck, a kind of combination type truck, to be used as a pumper and also a rescue truck. The Temple Volunteer Fire Department has been willing to assist us with the specifications of that truck and also trying to build efficient equipment, hundreds of trucks, to satisfy their current needs. The grant provided for three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars for the truck. It's pretty complicated. The county's had a fire truck, again, the same with fire trucks. It'll be titled Uvalde County's Name and be passed over to be used with the Temple Volunteer Fire Department. So, we're trying to aim the truck to as much efficient equipment as we can. The county will proceed with putting a project, advertising it, bids, and Uvalde Leader News. Actually, we sent that to Uvalde Leader News to be published about two weeks consecutively, actually, February the second, February the ninth. And we have a bid open date scheduled for March at two o'clock P M. Two, three P M. So, we are just waiting a number of minutes to be able to be within budget efficiently and to make a recommendation to the board of six regular meetings, uh, proceeding in March.
Any questions on the fire truck?
Can you match it? Do we have to match it with a certain amount of money or anything? This is all just one hundred percent?
The county has a small match in there between the fire truck and the truck. Yeah, they can, you know, depend on how bids come, how bids come in to see where that needs to be used. In, they have to use that to count more of the rest of them.
Are fire trucks available?
Yes, they are available. They are available, yes. We hope to have the truck here in Uvalde. Hopefully, within the next six to eight months, so moving from halftime to midnight, we need a drill for the truck. So, we've been in coordination with some of the manufacturers, and they have got the type of truck on hand. Appreciate that.
I'm going to have questions and follow on the fire truck. You want to go into the park?
So, as I did application, can you recall that Uvalde County owns a little decent land over there in Temple? Uh, on the corner of Main and ten forty-nine, there's a store there, and a couple of bots. There's this minority amount of facility there now, basketball, work, good big stuff. Anyhow, we've got a little over a hundred thousand dollars budget in the grant for park improvements. Uh, we have Mr. Davis Powell, our chef, assistance with the design of that park. And we've come to the, the conclusion of the, based on the kind of amount of funds that we have, try to, the improvements would be a playstake, people are familiar with that, kind of one year where kids can climb on and do all types of different recreational activities. We'll try to handle it. Some lights there, putting a couple of lights so it can be lighted at night. A good sidewalk, six, six, three yards of concrete sidewalk. A little trail around the interior of the bots there, some people from National Science and huge, uh, that's here in Manhattan. Also, a couple of decked tables, and maybe some sort of small pavilion with the roof on it. Uh, the county will also consider doing the parking. They walk the Main Street legally, pass into the lot there. Maybe add two, three, four parking spaces there and at least one of them being a handicap accessible parking place. So, the county will be contributing that towards, uh, after we use as much as we need. So, again, we're ready to flip that out for bid. Mr. Powell's going to have the bid package ready by the end of the week. And we're going to advertise that project. I mean, seriously, we've got two projects going down the road at the same time. We're going to advertise that in the Friday or noon Sunday consecutively, all in the week. And hopefully, with that project, on the same day, March fourth, at, uh, at least at two o'clock P M. So, the march at two o'clock, bid open, the fire trucks at two thirty, bid open in our March court. And we hope to be successful with that and bring that to the Commissioner's Court for public review.
And the grant period is the same as the fire truck until your period?
That is correct. We have twelve months to complete the park.
Questions to Paul?
I guess, Courtney, is considered the possibility of a day? As I mentioned, Courtney, is the added bonus of taking care of all the new improvements? Are we using garbage collection guys or what's the?
For what?
For taking care of that park? And all the improvement, or just whatever free bodies available?
Somebody else.
When we go into that budget for the year, when this thing becomes active, then we'll, the judge will recommend what's put in the budget to facilitate electricity and to facilitate what to our partner. We still got six months to eat. It'll be this next, but it'll be the next.
We're already mowing it and picking up trash.
Any other questions, comment? Is there motion to accept the report?
I make a motion to accept. Commissioner Parkes, your second. Commissioner Cogan, discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Down to six. Consider an act on review of the Temple Waterline and Street and Premise project.
Paul?
Thank you, Judge. Again, uh, this grant, again, is affiliated with the Temple. It has the same contract base as the park, and that's how rent, the bridge is back a year. We've got twelve months to complete this project. The county, actually, as you may recall, the branch of court, and here a while back, and awarded the water line and holding project to Uvalde Stock contract, which I think it has. This total grant is in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Seven hundred and sixty-two, two hundred fifty-one dollars. And Uvalde Stock's contract is in the amount of five hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and ten cents. So, one hundred percent of his contract will be paid for by the rent. The areas that are prioritized over there to have the water lines replaced are on Austin Street, from ten forty-nine to Avenue G. And on River Street, from Avenue C to Avenue D. From Avenue B to River Street, Main Street. Main Street to Avenue D, you have another track there that crosses Main Street, way back to Coop. So, Uvalde Stock will be mobilizing on February third, fair doubt. It will start on Austin Street and complete that before moving down to River Street. The contract is for a hundred and eighty days, six months. So, we feel more than confident that they will complete that activity within the six-month period. Other side of that project is the street improvements. The street the DEA approved to be reconstrued from that grant was Washington Street. Washington Street, those who are not familiar with it, is the street that brings behind the Coop. It's probably the street, one of the streets over there that gets the most amount of use. Due to the big trucks that come in there with grain and fertilizer, it's a bit needs substantial amount of repair. The plan is for Uvalde County Road Department to go in there and build Washington Street with ten forty-nine all the way to the end of the street, going west. They'll build that street, go in there, recompact, that part has been milled, watered, and rubbed. They'll come back with additional base material. The additional base material will be paid for by the rent. And then, they'll come in there with a paydown machine and do amendment of two inches of the grass that'll go over there on that street at the end of the day. The county also has some funds that were set aside by Test Off. You may recall that there some time ago, the county received a grant in the amount of a hundred, I think, twenty thousand dollars. It's called the County Transportation Fifty-Thirty Plan. Those funds are traditionally prioritized for county road for six feet. Which is out there on Coop and Austin. Being, that's going to be used as part of the county's map for that concrete crossing. During the course of that project, it was concluded that the county was, uh, probably better off just going rather than, because it was, you know, it was very raveling sand. That crossing there rather than extend like a cross all the way to the underside of Coop over there, outside of here, which will be pretty costly. So, these funds, then, the county has the base funds to be used to facilitate and repair some of the streets over there in the neighborhood, which may not be connected. So, once Uvalde Stock gets done looking at water lines, again, the county will come behind that contract and will do an overlay on those streets, possibly, uh, mill, milling those streets. Uh, not building, but maybe a couple of agents go in there and, and mill that and then go in there and grow with the water that, and put it in a pass law overlay on top of those. So, we hope that God got a hundred thousand dollars and all, with the Test Off funds, the DEA funds. Me and the county are going to do that in house. There are going to be good spirits and strength with the bunch as far as they can go, as far as they can go to, uh, reserving many streets as possible. We're going to visit, we're going to, we're going to visit Washington Street first. Uh, our timeline on that is a little shorter than other streets. So, the county will affect the mobiles over there in the next couple of weeks and initiate a work in Washington Street. We made an announcement to the community over there, you know, that, you know, there may be some temporary bypass and building of options, you know, access there to, of course, the project, the, 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 with the Coop. Be hot activity over there in the next two, three months, so we've got a lot of things going on.
Questions to Paul?
I would, Washington Street, that'd be west of what school, if it won't affect the school traffic. I'd say so. I mean, it's actually really special.
Other questions, comments? Okay, is there a motion to accept the report? Commissioner Diego, your second. Commissioner Cogan, discussion.
All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Down to seven. Consider an act on approval of resolutions supported by the operations department.
This is a new opportunity that the county is able to participate in. This is not anything new. The county's been anticipating their operations during the last eight years. These funds become free to people, passed down through the government's office. The county has already been, has a preliminary award of a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. If you're including here, showing this resolution, this is forty at the end. You may see there's a clause in there for match, but the grant is not to probably match. If for any reason, the county wouldn't, wouldn't go over that budget. Uh, for control back need, being patient, full time, uh, fitting seats, that one hundred grand, a hundred and fifteen thousand. We'll be talking about it with, with the county attorney's office and the sheriff's department to make sure that this happens in the county, state, and state budget. Uh, again, this is for the cash, for security operations, where Uvalde County Sheriff's Office, definitely. Depended overtime, it's always an overtime, uh, Uvalde County overtime policy, which is down to half of the pace rate for those particular officers that work the rent. This is a fringe rate of twenty-seven point five oh percent, up to a total of a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. It started on this, the March of August, twenty twenty-five, with the period of the city in January, February, twenty eighth, twenty twenty-six.
Questions to Paul? Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Commissioner Parkes, your second.
Commissioner Diego, discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Down to number eight.
Consider an act on the twenty twenty-five colonial foundation inspection bond report for the Texas Department of Agriculture.
And maybe call that Uvalde County submitted a plea application to the Texas Department of Agriculture back in December. Uh, deadline on that would be settled tonight. And here just recently, the Texas Department of Agriculture came out with a final score. Final score was for that round, and congratulations to Uvalde County Commission's Court, that they have been invited to submit a full-blown application in the amount of one billion dollars to provide water and sewer improvements, recognized communities in Uvalde County. Uh, Uvalde County actually has, says, a team recognized communities in the county. So, those funds could be used to prioritize, identify, to be prevented, represented, in those areas. Uh, we'll be bringing more information to the court. Uh, the deadline to apply for a full-blown application in the office for twenty twenty-five. So, between now and August twenty twenty-five, uh, we'll be working on that application and hook it together and submit it timed in to the Texas Department.
Questions? Congratulations to the court. Putting this in vision to continue to make improvements in unincorporated areas. Back, ready?
Really good.
I still have to go back.
Yeah, I'm going to go back. Uh, I'm very excited that the county has been invited to apply for the funds. Uh, that's a great piece of news, based on the address for your work in Uvalde County for supporting the application. I would like to ask the court, I don't know how you choose the colonial, the people use this money for if it's awarded, but I know that Uvalde State has a major water issue. Uh, I've been contacted by a number of people, provided documents, with concerns about, uh, the availability of water. Um, just a number of things that are going on out there that need attention. And unfortunately, the water supply company that operates leaves a lot to be desired in terms of what to do to their customers. Uh, it's a wonderful community that's striving to try to improve themselves, but they need help. And I understand that the water issue is critical out there. And so, I believe if Uvalde County can step in, if it's awarded this grant and choose that colonial, then it's a good one. Thank you.
Anything else, Paul? Questions? Questions to Paul?
This could be the same grant that we defined to that wasn't approved last year for our grant.
That is correct, Commissioner. There's, uh, appreciate that question. Here's about forty-five counties in the state of Texas, uh, due to their proximity to the Mexico-Texas border that are eligible to participate in this funding. The state agency sets a few, just a certain amount of their application aside over here, just where these counties are eligible. So one of the main criteria is the scoring process, the application is based on the colonialists that you have in your county. So you're absolutely correct. Uvalde County made the application, uh, year before last, and was not invited because those counties that have more colonialists in their county were eligible for that first round. Uh, that scoring process is going to be used for the next five years. So Uvalde is in that, in that ranking and scoring. They have seventeen colonialists, and so, uh, they've been invited. So you're absolutely correct that previously, Uvalde County submitted the application, they did not get invited, so we had to wait for a subsequent turner. And now, unfortunately, Uvalde County made the invite.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to accept the colonial construction grant?
Possible.
Mr. Parkus, your second.
Second.
Mr. Rogers, discussion. On the very side of that.
Aye.
Pose, Mr. Currys. Thank you, sir. Number nine, is considered act upon review of the original trade report. Steve.
I want to do, I want to take a point. This is for January the ninth through January the twentieth. We've been bleeding roads in precinct three and precinct four. We're passing by those, we're continuing to pass by those in Uvalde State, County Roads three oh one, three fifteen, four twenty-four, and four twenty-nine. Hopefully we'll finish up four twenty-nine today. Uh, been once brush on three nineteen, uh, cutting grass on two oh seven, three oh one, four two, County Road four oh three. Uh, Uvalde Road Department does not suffer any adverse conditions for not precinct three, so we're prepared for that. Uh, bridge repairs on County Road three forty-eight and seven plus is continuing, there's a small block left. Uh, the weather permitting will be finished. Uh, my department picked up a large load of construction material that was illegally dumped on County Road one oh one, west side of the Rio River. Uh, we contacted, uh, Max Northlinger, the constable, and requested assistance on giving them a, a more control or something. I can catch him back. So they're doing this stuff. Uh, the road department, uh, will welcome San Patricio County officials to Main Street, County Road twenty-nine, for tour of the facilities, as they consider the possibility of changing from a precinct road system to a, implement the unit road system that we have here. Uh, monitored and, uh, worked out a lot of this report, and so far that it's true. Any questions?
Question complete. Continue on this comment about San Patricio County. Uh, San Patricio County Commissioners will be here with the state, uh, to review and to observe the County Road Department, their economy and a precinct system they're thinking about, belong to the unit roads system. They'd like to come up and, and view what we do through the universe. I have hosted a gathering of the Commissioners' Court for that Monday, for that, for that Wednesday morning. If you want to attend, don't have, it's not going to be an official meeting. But if you want to attend, the gathering, there'll be no discussion of any business on our part, and that we know what's taking, but it has been posted as a gathering for the court. We'll be here first with the San Patricio County Commissioners, and then we'll come up.
Do I need to hear this?
I don't know exactly what time they're going to be here, because they're coming in from sitting that morning, I don't know. I'm saying ten o'clock, but I don't know for sure. But I'll ignore me, just y'all, when I learn the exact time to be. So you're welcome to come, you don't have to, it's not a judicial meeting, but, uh, if you just want to visit, we'll be your colleagues for San Patricio.
She had a little shot, or, or little.
Questions to the? Thank you. We live at item number ten, consider act on line budget amendments, we had it on this morning. Number eleven is considered act on, give a monthly force. And opportunity to review the force, are there any questions? Your motion to. Mr. Parkus, second. Mr. Pope, Mr. Rogers, discussion. On the very side of that.
Aye.
Pose, Mr. Currys. Number twelve is considered act on payment bill, she had an opportunity to, to review the bill. Is there a motion to, for, Mr. Rogers, your second. Mr. Diego. I'm sorry. Parkus, discussion. On the very side of that.
Aye.
Pose, Mr. Currys. Number thirteen is considered act upon resolutions in law commission. As we proposed today, I'd like to do so in memory of Francisca Lopez, Obito, Maria, Regina, Carmen, Idris, Mary Richard D. Story, Maria, the Socorro, Rob. Any others? It's not the act of business agenda, I'm speaking in stance and terms. I'll again remind you of the gathering, we're going to have these six, and ten of those, and seven of you. Thank y'all for being here.